Are we all set to go?
Yeah.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock for the Narragansett School Committee Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It is wonderful to see such a great turnout. We did not have any executive session tonight, so there were no executive session votes to report on. So with that, we are going to move right to our showcase, and I'm going to let Dr. Cummings do introductions for our showcase tonight.
There we go. Great, thank you so much. So as the committee knows, and I think many members of the public know, our senior projects are a key learning aspect of what our seniors do when they get to that point in their career. It is experiential learning, where they take lots of the things that they have mastered through K-12, and they apply it to a passion project, something that they are deeply interested in, that really helps to benefit the community. And so I am pleased to introduce Alexa, who is going to come up. So come on up, Alexa. And she is going to share with you her senior project, and I don't want to steal her thunder and kind of give you a preview, but it is truly amazing and a great representative example of some of the things that our seniors are doing this year.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexa Forrester. I'm a senior.
Hold on just a second. If you push the button and the red light comes on, then everybody watching from home can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So my name is Alexa Forrester. I'm a senior at Narragansett High School, and for my senior project, I chose to do a summer job fair. I will be organizing and running a summer job fair in this upcoming March. It will be held in the Narragansett High School cafeteria during advisory or task. My mentor is Mr. Hughes. He is a teacher at Narragansett High School. Luckily, he has organized many events, like proms and spirit weeks, but also he has organized a summer job fair, too. I chose this project for many different reasons, but the most important reasons were for students and local businesses in the community. For the students, specifically underclassmen, they're around that age that they start to find their first summer job, and I think a summer job, especially in March, could help them start early, and they could even find that job or get a good idea of what they want to do for the summer. Also, during that time, local businesses are searching for younger students that are willing to work busy summer months with tourists, especially in Narragansett. And I also want to leave this senior project, since it benefits not only just students, but businesses in the community. Hopefully, an upcoming senior and other students will pick up this project and hopefully do it after class 2025 graduates, and they will see how much that students are benefited, and maybe even the freshmen will see that they benefited from it, so they'll pick it up their senior year and do it again. For the students, I will promote my event by advertising and like using flyers that will be posted all throughout the school, and I will have the job fair highlighted in the February district newsletter. I will also deliver a 10-minute presentation in the Mariner 101 and 102 classes, which is freshman and sophomore. Like I said, the underclassmen would really benefit from this. I will, in the 10-minute presentation, I will advocate for my project and offer advice and tips, like what an interview, like a job interview is, and like how, what they're, what you're expected, like a mock interview. As like a high school kid and a younger kid, you usually want to know how you're going to benefit, so a key part in that presentation will make the students realize that they will benefit tremendously from the job fair, which will hopefully get them to come. A key part, too, is I want the students to know what they're like expected from at the fair, especially like being respectful to the like businesses that come and participate. For the employers, I will contact local businesses to invite them to the job fair. I will also contact the Chamber of Commerce. I will explain how they will benefit from participating, like they will get more people to work for them, and they can be more successful, hopefully get them to commit to the job fair. I will also ask for potential advice for the job fair to make it successful for everybody involved. So this is how I'm planning to make it look. I will, for the employers, they will have an information station that will have materials to share with students, they'll have applications, and I would really like them for, really like for them to explain what like the students are expected to, or expected of, like at the job, and to describe different jobs that are available, available, and a summary of what each of those jobs include. For the students, they will have working papers that will be provided by guidance, because some of them might not be like of age yet, and they'll need those working papers. I will also create charts, charts for students to take important notes about each other or each business, and encourage them to move around to as many stations as possible. After the summer job fair, I will send out a Google survey to hopefully get positive feedback from students and employers about the job fair, and even it could be feedback that I could give to anyone that wants to pick up and do this project again, or make it something that is known, so students can benefit, and the community and businesses can benefit. And I really want to like use that survey to get data from the students and employers about how many applications were submitted, and how many people were hired, to see if it was really successful. So that is my project and a little overview. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I had a question and a comment, but I couldn't hold mine. Does someone want to go first?
I just want to, I'll start off by saying, you know, terrific presentation, really, really impressive. I think this is a terrific opportunity with engaging with local businesses in our community, and I think the local businesses should embrace this opportunity to work with you. I think it would be really amazing to see our students out in the community working at local businesses. I think this would attract residents and tourists to local businesses, and I just think that this is an amazing opportunity to see them get involved with their local community. My only question is, what time of day would you be looking to have this event? Is it like during the school day, after school?
So I would do it during the school day, during, so it would be during advisory or task, which we have period one, period two, and then advisory or task. And hopefully, we haven't fully planned it out yet, but hopefully, we could get like 10 minutes from the previous class or 10 minutes from the next class, just so it's not like super, super rushed, but you also don't miss your entire period two or entire period, entire period three. So you can still have those classes, just like at least like 10 minutes.
Awesome. Excellent. Well, job well done, and I wish you the best on this project. Really great job.
I just had a question and a comment. A question, do you have a goal of how many businesses that you'd like to try to get to participate?
So my goal for right now is I want to have like 12 to like, like 13, like 14, around that kind of like number, just so there's like a variety of different like businesses that the students could choose from, because if I have all, like a little number, like also, I'm going to contact a bunch, so I'm not just narrowing it down, because some people, some businesses might not be able to participate. So if I like keep it low, then it's just going to make the results low. So I want to have like a good amount, so there's a variety to choose from.
I think that's definitely a good, realistic, attainable goal. That's great. And then just my comment is, I really like this project. I really like that you picked a project that is like much bigger than you. So some kids really kind of, they have a nice project, but their learning stretch is just for themselves. I'm going to learn to play the guitar, I'm going to learn to do a skill that I don't know how to do. What I love about this is the impact to help the kids in your school, and also to help the area businesses, because it's hard to find workers, especially just for the summer. So I really like that it's, it's, the whole focus is to help others, so I really like that. And I agree with Alex, she did a great job, and I can't believe how much work and how much planning you have done already by mid-October, so good for you.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Great job. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I concur. I think it's a wonderful project, and I know you said you were going to be making the presentation in Mariner 101 and 102, kind of focusing on the freshmen and sophomores. Will it also be open to juniors and seniors?
Yeah, anyone can go, anyone from the school can go. And I mean, last year, I was struggling to find a summer job, and I was going into my senior year, so I think it could benefit not only just the freshmen and sophomore, but the entire school, all the students.
And I also want to congratulate you on getting the feedback for the follow-up at the end of your project. That's very important, and you can really know how to change it in the years to come, or if it's just worked out great.
Yeah, I thought that would be kind of key, especially for after, because it doesn't just end that day, right? As soon as the bell rings, that day when the pro, when the fair's over, I want to like, one, thank all the people that came, because it really means a lot, and to make this possible, but also to get that feedback is really key, so I can help anyone that wants to
I'm a senior at Narragansett High School. And for my senior project, I chose to do a summer job fair. I will be organizing and running a summer job fair in this upcoming March. It will be held in the Narragansett High School cafeteria during advisory or task. My mentor is Mr. Hughes. He is a teacher at Narragansett High School. Luckily, he has organized many events like proms and spirit weeks, but also he has organized a summer job fair too. I chose this project for many different reasons, but the most important reasons were for students and local businesses in the community. For the students, specifically underclassmen, they're around that age that they start to find their first summer job. And I think a summer job, especially in March, could help them start early and they could even find that job or get a good idea of what they want to do for the summer. Also, during that time, local businesses are searching for younger students that are willing to work busy summer months with tourists, especially in Narragansett. And I also want to leave this senior project since it benefits not only just students, but businesses in the community. Hopefully, an upcoming senior and other students will pick up this project and hopefully do it after class 2025 graduates. And they will see how much that students are benefited. And maybe even the freshmen will see that they benefit from it, benefited from it. So they'll pick it up their senior year and do it again. For the students, I will promote my event by advertising and like using flyers that will be posted all throughout the school. And I will have the job fair highlighted in the February district newsletter. I will also deliver a 10-minute presentation in the Mariner 101 and 102 classes, which is freshman and sophomore. Like I said, the underclassmen would really benefit from this. I will, in the 10-minute presentation, I will advocate for my project and offer advice and tips like what an interview, like a job interview is and like how, what they're, what you're expected, like a mock interview. As like a high school kid and a younger kid, you usually want to know how you're going to benefit. So a key part in that presentation will make the students realize that they will benefit tremendously from the job fair, which will hopefully get them to come. A key part too is I want the students to know what they're like expected from at the fair, especially like being respectful to the like businesses that come and participate. For the employers, I will contact local businesses to invite them to the job fair. I will also contact the Chamber of Commerce. I will explain how they will benefit from participating. Like they will get more people to work for them and they can be more successful. Hopefully get them to commit to the job fair. I will also ask for potential advice for the job fair to make it successful for everybody involved. So this is how I'm planning to make it look. I will, for the employers, they will have an information station that will have materials to share with students. They'll have applications. And I would really like them for, really like for them to explain what like the students are expected to or expected of like at the job and to describe different jobs that are available, available, and a summary of what each of those jobs include. For the students, they will have working papers that will be provided by guidance because some of them might not be like of age yet and they'll need those working papers. I will also create charts, charts for students to take important notes about each other or each business and encourage them to move around to as many stations as possible. After the summer job fair, I will send out a Google survey to hopefully get positive feedback from students and employers about the job fair. And even it could be feedback that I could give to anyone that wants to pick up and do this project again or make it something that is known so students can benefit and the community and businesses can benefit. And I really want to like use that survey to get data from the students and employers about how many applications were submitted and how many people were hired to see if it was really successful. So that is my project and a little overview. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I had a question and a comment, but I couldn't hold mine. Does someone want to go first?
I'm just want to, I'll start off by saying, you know, terrific presentation. Really, really impressive. I think this is a terrific opportunity with engaging with local businesses in our community. And I think the local businesses should embrace this opportunity to work with you. I think it would be really amazing to see our students out in the community working at local businesses. I think this would attract residents and tourists to local businesses. And I just think that this is an amazing opportunity to see them get involved with their local community. My only question is, what time of day would you be looking to have this event? Is it like during the school day, after school?
So I would do it during the school day during, so it would be during advisory or task, which we have period one, period two, and then advisory or task. And hopefully, we haven't fully planned it out yet, but hopefully we could get like 10 minutes from the previous class or 10 minutes from the next class, just so it's not like super, super rushed. But you also don't miss your entire period two or entire period, entire period three. So you can still have those classes, just like at least like 10 minutes.
Awesome. Excellent. Well, job well done. And I wish you the best on this project. Really great job.
I just had a question and a comment. A question, do you have a goal of how many businesses that you'd like to try to get to participate?
So my goal for right now is I want to have like 12 to like, like 13, like 14, around that kind of like number, just so there's like a variety of different like businesses that the students could choose from. Because if I have all like a little number, like also I'm going to contact a bunch. So I'm not just narrowing it down because some people, some businesses might not be able to participate. So if I like keep it low, then it's just going to make the results low. So I want to have like a good amount. So there's a variety to choose from.
I think that's definitely a good, realistic, attainable goal. That's great. And then just my comment is, I really like this project. I really like that you picked a project that is like much bigger than you. So some kids really kind of, they have a nice project, but their learning stretch is just for themselves. I'm going to learn to play the guitar. I'm going to learn to do a skill that I don't know how to do. What I love about this is the impact to help the kids in your school and also to help the area businesses because it's hard to find workers, especially just for the summer. So I really like that. It's, it's the whole focus is to help others. So I really like that. And I agree with Alex. She did a great job. And I can't believe how much work and how much planning you have done already by mid-October. So good for you.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Great job. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I concur. I think it's a wonderful project. And I know you said you were going to be making the presentation in Mariner 101 and 102, kind of focusing on the freshmen and sophomores. Will it also be open to juniors and seniors?
Yeah, anyone can go. Anyone from the school can go. And I mean, last year I was struggling to find a summer job and I was going into my senior year. So I think it could benefit not only just the freshmen and sophomore, but the entire school, all the students.
And I also want to congratulate you on getting the feedback for the follow-up at the end of your project. That's very important. And you can really know how to change it in the years to come or it's just worked out great.
Yeah, I thought that would be kind of key, especially for after because it doesn't just end that day, right? As soon as the bell rings, that day when the pro, when the fair's over. I want to like, one, thank all the people that came because it really means a lot and to make this possible. But also to get that feedback is really key. So I can help anyone that wants to pick it up. Or I can help even like just to know in my head, like what to do different if I wanted to do something like this again.
Good luck. I think it's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
Okay. So, and thank you for coming tonight too. So we're not going to take a break in the meeting. We're going to keep going, but we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're obviously welcome to stay, but if you are a very busy senior with lots to do and your family's here and you want to make a silent exit, that's not a problem at all. And we really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you guys. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on with our next item, it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. So we are moving on to oral reports. And our first oral report is the student liaison report from Marco.
Good evening. So a month into school now. And first, I just want to thank once again everyone who has supported and congratulated me on this role. When I got out online, my phone absolutely blew up with positive comments. So that was just wonderful from teachers, community members, everybody. It was great. So the school year is going great, believe it or not. We are already into our second month of school and time is just flying by. The school community has lots of activity and there is definitely much more to look forward to. So I will just be summarizing the events and what's happening in our clubs and extracurriculars at the high school for the 2024, 2025 academic school year. Last report, I mentioned we were getting ready for Spirit Week. That was a great success. I'm super thankful for all the class advisors, class boards, all the students that really make that possible. It was a really fun week with many different themed days, Ren and Whites Day, Sports Day. It was just great seeing all the class foyers, decorative themes. And I had a really fun time. And honestly, I'm super sad that that was my last Spirit Week of high school. The field, the Spirit Week ended with Field Day. This was a lot of fun, great display of school spirit, tons of student participation. Lots of events to get students active outside. We had four-by-one relay, cornhole, potato sack relay, and just so many more. The atmosphere was electric, loud. We had great music. Class historians took some really good photos of that event. And we are just super thankful for everyone who made that possible. I'd like to thank Dr. Cummings, Mr. Fiori, and Mr. McCloskey for attending the Petition Project Showcase on September 23rd. For civics in the senior project class, this project was for students to identify a school policy, school rule, bring up something new that they wanted to change. And I thought the presentations were great. We got great feedback. So we are thankful for the administrators who took the time to attend that. Wednesday, October 22nd, we hosted our second club fair during advisory. This was great. We got to showcase many different clubs and groups. Me and a couple of the members of my team got to showcase our track and field program at Narragansett. So that was really cool. Special thanks to Mr. Fiori for letting us do that. And I just thought the club fair was excellent as I believe extracurriculars and clubs are what keep many students coming to school. Definitely myself included sometimes. Senior project update. Senior project proposals have been approved. We are starting handwork, hands-on work with our mentors. I had a great day today doing some senior project stuff. The first five hours of work aren't due until December, providing lots of time for progress. But I'm sure it will come up before we know it. I want to give some feedback on the Mariner 401 classes. These classes have been great for me as a student. As a senior, you're very busy with your regular workload, your athletics, everything you have going on. So as someone who's new to the common application project, process, this helps me manage so many tasks without having to go to guidance constantly. Just having that advisor in the room is super helpful. We had Hispanic Heritage Month. October has been filled with activities thanks to the World Language Department. On Wednesdays during task, we had the opportunity to sign up for activities such as pinata making, making authentic Mexican foods and crafts. And State Treasurer James Diosa visited NHS on October 11th and we had a great assembly hearing his story. And then just a couple of clubs in our CTE programs. There is a lot at the high school where if I reported everything, we would be here for a while. So our FFA group has been doing multiple projects. They are getting prepared for the National FFA Convention on October 21st in Indianapolis, Indiana. They will compete in four separate contests: dairy handling, agriculture sales, milk quality and products, and prepared public speaking. And two of our CTE programs, I'd like to shout out. Our CTE Educator Rising Program, off to a great start under Ms. LaPriece, Ms. Davia, and Ms. Laranco. The club group has met twice now and has even planned a year's worth of fundraising that will show students example of leadership in the classroom setting. Lastly, our CTE Plumbing Program, which I have a couple of friends in. So it was great to get some information on that. They've been working at the local union at the UA 51 in East Providence every day. Throughout the past two months, they've really been working hard on a lot of different projects. I've got to see some of those pictures. And they are learning an overview of the union jobs, work experience, and their practice skills with black iron pipe and its application, cutting pipe, and measuring pipe length. Overall, we're only a month into school, but it is flying by. So nothing crazy yet, but it is going by really fast. And we are just super thankful for everybody that makes that happen.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Marco? Diane?
I recognized all the events on Field Day except one. What is a can jam?
Great question. I believe that was, feels like it was so long ago, but really it was a couple of weeks ago. Why is that the one minute I'm not?
So that's a game where you have a frisbee and you kind of try to frisbee it into a slot of a hole of, like, almost like a mini garbage can. And so it's, it requires extraordinary skill.
New games come up every day. It's amazing.
And just one other question. If you don't mind, could you share with us what topic you thought needed to be changed or what rule in terms of the Petition Project Showcase?
Yeah, definitely.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
No, no problem. My group did our presentation on, we proposed a early dismissal for seniors, a couple of minutes early to help with some of the traffic problems at NHS. So, you know, that early dismissal wouldn't be every day. Maybe if that was once a week, two or three minutes early to get out, to try and stop some of the little fender benders that happened last year and some of the little things that were happening. So we had a great presentation to Mr. Fiori and all the teachers that attended that.
Thank you. And I just had a question. Would you be willing to share what your senior project topic is?
Absolutely. So I have worked at a beach club, Bonnet Shores, for the past four years. And me and the Assistant General Manager are going to be working together to do a mechanical beach cleanup. So I'm going to be learning three different types of construction equipment to do a seaweed and beach cleanup removal. So it's going to include a couple of different steps. The first step is going to be learning the equipment first, getting used to it. And then we're going to use a skid steer to remove that seaweed, use an excavator to dig what we have to dig and level that out, and then use a tractor surf rake to flatten the beach. And I am super excited about it. I can't wait to get behind the machines. And yeah, just really looking forward to it.
That's fantastic. Thank you. And a very well-written and a great report. So lots of information, lots going on. I'm going to guess Mr. Fiori probably doesn't have too much to say because if he goes before you, he's going to steal your thunder about all the great things going on. So, but well done. So thank you. All right. So we're moving on to school reports. And we'll just start with the elementary school and work our way up. So elementary school.
Good evening. So we have had a busy beginning of the school year since I've seen you last month. We've done lots of fun activities. We had our annual Walk to School Day last week, where approximately 50 students participated in walking from the peer school to the elementary school. And this was organized through NYPD and it's an annual event. We started it a couple of years ago and it was quite well-attended. We have some upcoming PTO events. We have Costume Bingo. It's October 24th. There'll be two sessions in the evening. We're asking families to register so we don't have overcrowding, but we're encouraging families to wear their costumes, their school-friendly costumes, and participate in some bingo after school, or in the evening, I should say. We're beginning our after-school enrichment. Registration is currently happening now and will be occurring at the end of October. We kind of waited a little bit later than typically because we wanted fall sports to kind of be wrapping up so more people could participate. So that's ramping up. We have a diversity equity mini-committee in our school. We have a big committee in the district, but our school actually has a mini-committee. And we also celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month. Our world language, Emma Katanzaro, Spanish teacher, did quite a few little activities with the students. In fourth grade, they studied 21 countries and learned a little bit about each country. In grade four, grades two, three, and four were introduced to one person of Hispanic heritage each week and who they've made a significant impact and contribution to the world. And so that's helping the students learn a little bit more about the culture. And in grades K and 1, they're doing some read aloud books and some combination English slash Spanish books from Spanish heritage authors. So that's kind of what we're doing. We also invited our zumba instructor back from last year. And she actually did a pre-K through four zumba dance session where she taught them all how to zumba. And I'll tell you, it was awesome. So they had the music going and she taught them different dance moves. It was really a fun time. And that was pre-K all the way up through fourth. We finished our first round of MTSS, our Multi-Tierred System of Support, where we are looking at our in-school data from last year and into this year and picking students that are eligible for intervention and supports in academics of math, reading, and writing. So we're taking a little bit of peek at that. And we've done our first round. We've met with K through four teachers and looked at their diagnostic data and some in-school data based on some of their assessments so far from this school year and made some recommendations as to intervention. So we've got that up and running. We actually didn't stop it. We started right from the beginning of the year where the kids left off last year. These are just kind of updating. So we've done that. And we're very excited. Next week, grades two through four, we'll be going on a little field trip to the high school auditorium to be, observe a music, a musical called Bilabala. It's an African duo that will be presenting some music, different types of music to our student body, grades two through four. And I believe fifth and sixth grade will also be attending. But the big thing for our kids is they're going to be going to the high school by bus. So they're all excited about going to the high school. We've begun our Junior Leaders Program with our fourth grade students, helping some of the younger students. We've actually added some third grade students to participate. They're not necessarily junior leaders. We're calling them a little like junior junior leaders. But they've been helping some of the preschool classes and some of the other grades with recess and teaching them some leadership and role model of how to play. Our theater production has been set up. This year, you'll be treated to the musical The Lion King Kids. Auditions have been completed and our first practice was this morning, this afternoon. And one thing that we've added is we have Jessica DeRima, our art teacher, who has a little bit of background in dance. And she'll be teaching some actual dancing to go with the musical this year. So we'll have acting, music, singing, and dance. So we're very excited about that. And we had our first Alice drill today. It went very well. We had the support of our SROs on site. And I'll tell you, it went off without a hitch. The students were very well-prepared and they did a great job. Any questions?
Just first of all, really impressive and never ceases to amaze me just how much has already gone on in the first few weeks of school. So very busy. Can you just give a sound bite on the Diversity Equity Mini-Committee? What that looks like? Who's participating? When do they meet?
It's come out of the general committee. We just had a lot of parents that were wanting to be pretty involved and coming up with some other cultural ideas that we could bring forward to our student body. So we haven't met as the mini-committee yet, but it did start last year and it kind of helped us with just gaining some new ideas and things that we could do just to bring different opportunities to our students. So culturally, diversity, just as many different things as we can.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful and very important. And I think that cultural awareness is really seen in just about every activity that you mentioned. And I'm very excited to see the cross-school interaction. You know, the elementary school visiting the middle school, the high school. It's, it makes them more comfortable and prepared for making those transitions to the other schools. So I'm very happy to see that.
That'll bring some excitement to their lives too, right? So they can get to see the high school auditorium.
Right. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. Great report. Many, many exciting things at the elementary school. So thank you. So we're on to the peer school.
Good evening. So October at Narragansett Peer School is a bustling month filled with activities that enrich our students' lives both in and out of the classroom. Our inter-mural program has kicked off with an impressive turnout, offering a variety of options including basketball, cooperative games, wiffle ball, and bowling. It's particularly heartening to see 40 of our students heading to Old Mountain Lanes every Thursday to bowl with Ms. Tatusa and Ms. Pezza, fostering a sense of community beyond our school walls. I'd also like to highlight that we have been participating with Hispanic Heritage Month. Every morning for the last few weeks, we have been doing, actually 20 mornings, highlighting the 20 countries that represent the culmination of the Hispanic heritage. And we've also had a library display that is encouraged reading for authors that have Hispanic backgrounds. In the realm of academics and personal development, we are excited to introduce Naviance to our sixth through eighth grade students. This platform will be instrumental in developing their individual learning plans, helping them set goals, exploring their strengths, and research potential career paths. We're looking forward to integrating this into our advisory over the year. Our commitment to social and emotional learning continues with the ruler approach. Students have been actively engaged in creating grade-level charters, reinforcing the idea that our classrooms are communities where everyone deserves to feel safe and valued. This initiative also aligns perfectly with today's activity, which was Unity Day, a celebration we had where we saw a sea of orange throughout the school, symbolizing our collective stand against bullying. The day culminated in the school-wide Unity Walk, a powerful visual representation of our commitment to foster a respectful and inclusive environment. Earlier this month, we also had an activity with the Narragansett Police Department. Our bike and roll had over 40 students and staff embarking on a 2.5-mile ride from Point Judith Country Club to our school. It was fantastic to see our community spirit out there. Lastly, as the promise from the last school committee meeting, I'd like to report out on our school improvement meeting from yesterday. We covered several important topics. First, we went over our school goal progress. We discussed our advancements towards our school goals, highlighting our strengths and addressing ongoing challenges. Also, we had some discussion around grade five lunch and recess. I initiated the conversation about this, seeking input from the group on our future direction to ensure discussion was from the group on our future direction. To ensure discussion was informed, I provided members with last month's school committee presentation, the district attorney's letter from the previous meeting, and feedback that we gathered from our students. The discussion was respectful and productive. Following our conversation, members were given a form to share their final thoughts and preferred direction for peer school. I emphasized my neutrality in this matter, focusing solely on gathering their feedback. After reviewing all the responses, the Sit team decided to maintain the current 35-minute lunch period with a flexible schedule for recess release. Many members emphasized the importance of allowing children sufficient time to finish eating while ensuring that we meet our students' instructional needs. To provide further insight on this process, I'd like to invite two of our Sit parents, Matt Ehrlichson and Mindy Kerr, to share their perspectives on the discussion and the process-making process, decision-making process.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Mrs. Shardier, I'm Matt Ehrlichson. I'm the parent of an 11th grader at the high school who spent four years at NPS, currently the parent of a 7th grader at NPS who's been there since 5th grade. I'm a member of the school improvement team at NPS and prior to that, of the school improvement team at NES. And I'd like to take a second to commend Ms. Shardier for the way that she handled this sensitive issue with the school improvement team. She explained the issue and left it at that. The members of the team were left to engage in a free, fair, and frank discussion on the merits of the issue. I can only speak for myself. As an individual member of the team, I cannot presume to speak on behalf of the team. I have taught in higher education for over 20 years. During that time, I've encouraged all the students who come through my classroom door to set aside their assumptions about the world, to gather evidence and data, and think critically about the world they're in. So, when I received the agenda for the school improvement team meeting, and I saw that 5th grade recess, or evaluation of 5th grade recess was on the agenda, it piqued my curiosity because I realized that all that I know about recess is what I experienced myself of recess when I was in elementary school a long time ago. I could also ask my 7th grader, but if I ask my 7th grader anything, I usually get a grunt in response, and that's not necessarily very helpful. So, I turned to the literature, and I looked at the research. And what I found did not surprise me. There's a large body of research over an extended period of time establishing positive links between recess and student health and recess and learning outcomes. But what I also learned was that that is an incomplete picture. What astounded me was the depth and breadth of research over decades that I found that establishes a positive correlation between recess for middle-school-age students and increased incidents of social conflict, victimization, and bullying, which is contrary to student health and well-being. And I thought, geez, this actually is contrary to Goal 3 of our school improvement plan, which is to improve social-emotional learning and the mental health environment for our students by, among other things, combating relational aggression, bullying, and other types of antisocial activities. So, by extending recess, which might be of benefit to some students, it's certainly not necessarily of benefit to all students, especially to those students who face the prospect of being subjected to relational aggression, bullying, and other forms of victimization in a supervised but unstructured environment. So, to that extent, I, as an individual, meet a member of the school improvement team. I'm opposed to extending recess time for 5th graders. The other grounds for my opposition to this is that it would, in part, come at the expense of instructional time in the Unified Arts, art, music, phys ed, et cetera. And I find it troubling that, not just in Narragansett, but in American society generally, that we tend to view the Unified Arts as expendable, and that we cannibalize instructional time and instructional resources in the Unified Arts, subjects that can actually motivate some kids to attend school and do well in school at the expense of other things. Now, it might be one thing to reduce instructional time in art or music for the sake of math and ELA, but to reduce instructional time in pursuits that actually cultivate healthy habits of the heart and mind, that cultivate our human spirits, rather than engage in activities which simply feed our animalistic appetites, is unacceptable for me, and I don't think necessarily helpful to our society community locally and to society at large. And my third point is, apart from 5th grade recess, the fact that Narragansett offers recess to 6th, 7th, and 8th graders when the law does not require it, I personally find, as a parent and as an educator, I find it excessive and even indulgent. And I'll tell you why. In the 20-plus years that I've been teaching college students and that I've been teaching college freshmen, one thing has not changed, and that's their age. They come into class, they're 17, they're 18 years old. If they're 18 years old, then they are, under the law, legally adults. But one thing that has changed is their level of maturity, and this has accelerated since COVID. What I found, and this is anecdotal, based on my personal experience, but I suggest many of my colleagues would probably agree with these observations, is that by and large, our college students lack two critical characteristics: executive functioning and emotional resiliency. They lack the executive functioning necessary to sustain workflow, and they lack the emotional resiliency needed to sustain a workload. I think at some point, as a community and as a society, we have to stop, as a matter of public policy, infantilizing and feralizing our youth, and recognize that part of their growth and development is growing and developing into mature adults who can be productive members of society and not just the economy. And I think discussions of extending recess higher up into the grade levels is contrary to that goal. And for those reasons, I, as a member of the school improvement team, oppose extending 5th grade recess. And I will leave it at that, and I will turn it over to Mindy to offer her views.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings and school committee members. I've been at the peer school now for three years with my daughter. Like I said last month, yes, there were some challenges when she first moved over, but I think that Narragansett has a very unique situation. We give kids four years to prepare for high school. When I went to high school, I had 8th, excuse me, I had 7th and 8th grade before I became a freshman and got thrown to the wolves. We have, they have four years. I think that leads to maturity-wise in our high schoolers, and I think that's why we see the amazing things and some of the amazing colleges that these kids go to from Narragansett. And whether they need those four years in the peer school, and they need to learn to adjust. That's a whole part of transitioning from one school to the next. And a 5th grader is the great age to start at. I saw the maturity level, and my daughter increased over that first year, and it was amazing. I never thought I'd have a 6th grader so independent as she was. And even at 7th grade now, it's, the things I get out of her are awesome, and I wouldn't have changed a thing about it, including how much lunch she got or how much recess she got. She was very disappointed she was getting little, or not as much as she got in elementary school, but she adjusted. And she needed to make that adjustment, so she could be well-adjusted, and she has been. Emily did an excellent job of staying neutral throughout the whole conversation with the Sit team. Everybody voiced their opinions. They were very respectful. And it amazed me to see that a lot of the parents say the same thing, that everything should stay status quo, because there doesn't need to be a change. These kids will adjust. They're smart kids. And they're smart enough kids to know that when they go out and they have unstructured time in that recess yard, that it leads to not-good things. And I can only say from experience, the stories my daughter came home with, and to encourage her not to feed into it, I wouldn't want her to have any more unstructured time outside. So, thank you.
Questions?
Sure.
So, I forwarded the response. Ms. McNeese asked me to, at the end of the meeting last month, contact the commissioner myself and ask what the commissioner's evaluation of the law was. And I forwarded that to administration and to you. And I was just wondering if they had that in their packet, the Sit team?
So, we included the lawyer's letter, which is the commissioner's reading on that from, he read into that a couple of years ago, and 5th grade at the middle school needs to stay at a middle school. It's considered middle school.
So, that was, that was an opinion on Commissioner Wagner's back from 2016, but I was going to save this for communication because I thought it was already disseminated. But I'll just, I'll just read it because I'm not getting a clear answer whether or not the Sit committee got the commissioner's response that I submitted to all of you on February, September 20th. Did they have that in their review packet?
So, I didn't share your personal email with anyone, and I didn't ask you to contact the commissioner on behalf of the school committee. I would never share your personal email with the principal to give parents.
At the end of the meeting, you did ask me for the commissioner. But anyway, let me just read this.
Right. Jen, could I just clarify one thing?
In one minute, in one minute. So, I did reach out to the commissioner, and this was the commissioner's response on September 20th that I forwarded to everybody. And it said, "As to your second question, Rhode Island General Law 16224.2 attached makes clear that in any school managed or controlled by the state that have elementary grades, kindergarten through 6, children shall be afforded at least 20 consecutive minutes of supervised, safe, and unstructured free-play recess each day. As to your question, there's no specific time period required for lunch under the state or federal law. But that being said, state law provides that all public elementary and secondary schools shall be required to make federally reimbursable lunches available to students attending those schools through the USDA's National School Program. In accordance with federal regulations, Rhode Island General Law 16810, under the applicable federal regulations according to the Food and Nutritional Service of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, they encourage schools to provide sufficient lunch periods that are long enough to give all students, all students, adequate time to be served and to eat their lunches. Additionally, federal regulations require the period in which the school has designated at lunch period occur between 10 and 2, which I believe you are compliant in that. For additional information regarding school meal best practice, feel free to refer to the resources at Action for Healthy Kids, which actually suggests a half hour." So, I just want to make sure, you know, law is important. They're there for a reason. So, it's really unfortunate, it sounds like possibly, that this wasn't disseminated to the Sit team, but I wanted to share that because, I mean, there were, there was a student up here saying that they didn't have time to eat. So, thank you.
And so, just to clarify, your response was from the commissioner's secretary. I went to the commissioner herself and to ask for reference to legal whether she's overturning the previous commissioner's legally binding decision that is posted on their website, and they have not yet responded.
I look forward to that response.
I do as well.
As I mentioned in my email in response to this, that we need the commissioner to respond in a more thorough manner than just having a secretary write an email response, especially when there's a conflict between a memorandum of understanding. It needs a little more legal weight if we're going to deal with this.
Did you have any other parts of your school report for October?
No, that was it. I just wanted to conclude with what the Sit team had shared and decided.
Okay. Sure. Any other comments or questions from the school committee, Alex?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your efforts of meeting with the Sit team, for the parents who came to speak on their behalf and share their views. I know it's been expressed that it's a particularly sensitive topic, but hearing the neutrality that you shared and having these conversations, and, you know, I'm sure that there will be more conversations to come. It's really reassuring and appreciated to know that you're willing to have these conversations and that these conversations are happening within our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to agree with Alex. Again, it's, you know, your job as principal to make decisions that are always putting the needs of kids first. And sometimes, there's decisions that you just are going to make on your own. Sometimes, you're going to get input from your staff. Sometimes, you're going to get input from the superintendent. And with this process, you got input from a really diverse group of stakeholders that included parents and teachers. So, I appreciate you really taking the time to look at that and really to listen to people. And, you know, there's, people are not always going to agree on everything, but you have to always put the needs of kids first. And I know that you do that, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen from multiple stakeholders. So, thank you. I think you're doing a great job, and we really appreciate all of your hard work every day.
Thank you. The Sit team is really diverse. We have parents as well as students. I know that Matt brought his son Will with him, even though Will often responds in grunts. But, you know, it's really important to have that student voice. He was not the only student at the table on that day. We had our teachers and staff, as well as those parents and students.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, we're on to the high school.
Good evening. Marco's fabulous, isn't he?
Yes.
He's so energetic, his enthusiasm, his interest is so genuine. I actually report to him every Friday. So, he's making my job very easy here. Going to cut to the chase. Trying to see things that were mentioned. We had an open house that was also very successful. 80 families attended. So, that's definitely encouraging as we move forward. The World Language Department is finishing Hispanic Heritage Month, and the Rhode Island State Treasurer, James Diosa, visited last Friday and spoke to all of our students about his journey as a Latino in Rhode Island and his future plans. Narragansett High School was awarded the Silver Recognition in the AP Honor Roll, very close to being gold. We were gold in two of the three categories. So, we have a little more work to do. We're going to keep on pushing forward. Today was PSAT Day for our 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. Our seniors worked on their senior projects and post-secondary planning. FFA... FFA is going to Nationals next week, so we wish them well. And Karen Festa has been working very hard. I know she does a lot of different things for a lot of different schools, wears a lot of hats. But she's been working with SEL and our Ruler Initiative. And throughout the fall semester, she's working with our freshmen exploring the importance of emotions, specifically how to de-escalate strong emotions during conflict. Through role-playing discussion, they unpack the Ruler SEL skills. These are the skills of emotional intelligence. Students are learning how to use the ruler tools to develop and enhance social emotional skills. And just some key dates moving forward. On October 30th, we have our Fall Concert at 7:00 PM. On November 7th, that's our next PTO meeting. November 8th, that's actually the end of the first marking period already. And November 12th and 14th, we have our parent-teacher conferences. So, parents can look for some communications in regard to that and how to sign up online.
All right. Questions for the high school?
That concert on October 30th, is that at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I somehow got onto the distribution list for the high school. And I have to tell you, I love how that comes through. It just, it makes sense. I know what's coming up. I get the, the feeling of the spirit of the school and all of that. And I just wanna say whoever is running all of that communication, it, 100%, I, I think it's awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the high school? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Onto Student Services.
Good evening. I feel like for the last couple of years, we've been talking about the Narragansett Special Education Action Committee, which is a parent-run organization. And we have been, Jill and I have been working with parents over, actually, since I was hired and building up enthusiasm. And then life happens and those parents get very busy with their children and their families. And then a new group of parents comes. And it was last spring where we picked the date of last Wednesday. We put it on the district calendar. We did some PR around it. We had parents share at open houses. And the night actually happened. And there was a moment, I know, where Jill and I looked at each other and we said, "This is really happening." There was about 17 staff and parents that joined Jill and myself that evening. We did it both virtual and in person. That was very important to the parents that had helped us to organize. And they started the meeting off by people introducing who they were, but also sharing something good. And it was really touching to hear stories about how their students' needs have been met or about a staff member or something positive that has happened in their child's career. And it just built this unity amongst the group and excitement for this work. From that, we established eight members with six of those members being parents, two of them being faculty. And then from that, they then nominated and put forth Amy O'Brien, who is a parent, Katie Griffin, who is a teacher, special educator, as co-leaders, and Denise Lobella as their secretary. And what's really great is within this range of eight members, they represent everything from preschool all the way to our high school. And so, really excited about the work they're going to be doing. They're meeting again in early November. They're going to be going through and finalizing their bylaws and their brochure. And then I'll be working with Dr. Cummings to make sure that they then are able to come to a future school committee meeting where they're able to officially be recognized by you because they are a school committee committee and present to you the bylaws that they're proposing and talk a little bit about the work they're excited about. But I just wanna share that with you. I also thought, I talked a little bit about, the Rhode Island Department of Ed has been doing some extensive work around mathematics and making sure that there were professional learning opportunities for both special educators and general educators to make sure that math is accessible for all students. And so, we have had some very dedicated professionals within our district that gave up some of their time this summer to do a five-day training. And then we've got another group that worked during the spring and again this fall with Dr. Ritticomi on retention strategies and learning some evidence-based strategies of how we move learning from the short-term to the long-term memory so that students can recall. And we have a group of 10 special educators and general education teachers and math coaches and interventionists that will be doing between November and January another five-day training with Dr. Kane to really talk about the fundamentals of math. And are we teaching the process or just the steps and do we understand the number sense? Mr. Fiore already talked about the open house. I had an opportunity to participate and it's so exciting to meet families from other districts who are excited about our CTE programs, but also to meet our eighth-grade families who are coming up and see our eighth graders walking through the halls and parents engaging in what will that look like for our children. So, it's really exciting to start that transition. I bring my business cards and I always give a bunch of them away and encourage families to reach out to me so that we can have more personal conversations. And I'm excited to share that, along with three other colleagues in the state of Rhode Island, that in early November, I'll be a presenter at the Council of Administrators Special Ed Conference. It's a national conference for special ed administrators. And we will be presenting on Rhode Island's program for where we mentor beginning special ed administrators in the state of Rhode Island to make sure that we can retain them, but also give them the skill set to kinda tackle this challenging position. And that's all I have for this evening. If you have any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment. I think that's great that you're presenting at that very important national conference as the Rhode Island Special Education Special Services Director of the Year. I think that's fantastic. And we're, we're always proud of, to hear that when our staff are making an impact on the national level. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
Just thank you for making the extra effort over the last couple of years to really bring those families together. It was really important for us to reinstate membership in the, in the mandated state special education program. So, I, I'm definitely hearing a lot throughout the community that that's exactly what it is. And, you know, an extension of that is, I'm sure, our unified teams that we have in the middle, in the high school. And to, to bring that energy then out into the public is just that next step. And I can't, I can't wait to see how you guys do that. So, thank you for putting that effort in.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Jen. It's very exciting and I'm relieved to an extent to see it finally come to fruition. It's a very important committee, arguably the most important committee. And it's really wonderful to see that parents are getting involved under your leadership and guidance and really appreciate all the efforts there. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to bringing them to a future meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to school committee reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go last, if anyone wants to go first. And there's a reason for that. Does anyone wanna go first?
I don't know if anyone else has a school committee report to give beside you. I have a comment, but I'm gonna hold my comment until after you're done.
All righty. Well, I will go first and last. So, I met with the Health and Wellness Committee on October 1st, kicking off the year, receiving school reports and asked that each of the Nutrition, Mental Health, and Physical Activities Subcommittee's meet to discuss goals for the upcoming year. There's also the Annual Breakfast for the Rhode Island Healthy School Coalition's next Wednesday on October 23rd at the Crown Plaza from 7:00 to 10:00 AM. And there are still two spots open for that event. So, please reach out to Lauren or myself if you are interested in attending. And as many of you know, that this is my last school committee meeting for now. I just wanna take a moment and thank the voters for their support they have shown by putting their trust in me over the last four years. Thank you to the many teachers, our principals, Lisa, Emily, and Chris, and staff who work hard every day to support Narragansett students and for your participation in Subcommittee meetings. We really do have the best teachers and staff. Thank you to Gail, Melissa, Lauren, Karen, and Pete for answering all of my many questions and for the incredible amount of work that you all do behind the scenes to ensure that our district continues to be funded, managed, and well-informed. Thank you to our student liaison, Marco, for picking up the torch for Maya and taking on the initiative to participate in conversations with the school committee and community and for the school committee's support in creating this very important position, ensuring that students will always have a seat at the table. I am confident that this kind of dialogue with students and staff will continue to grow over time. Finally, I wanna thank the members of the school committee who I have had the distinct honor and privilege of working alongside these last two to four years to support all Narragansett students. Justin, Diane, Tammy, Jen, and Josh, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve our community and for providing your unique perspectives to support Narragansett students. Thank you for being a sounding board and for inviting the community into our conversations. I have learned a lot from each of you and I am grateful for your partnership. I have enjoyed working with each of you. Thank you for allowing me to provide my input as a student who grew up in Narragansett school system. I am honored to have worked alongside you. Dan Warner said on the first day of my high school career in Narragansett that I would never forget the education and experiences that I had while attending Narragansett and to this day, I never have. Thank you for allowing me to serve on the school committee with you all. You have been great mentors to me. It has been the greatest honor of my life serving with you and for Narragansett residents and families. I am hopeful that this isn't goodbye, but rather see you soon. Thank you.
And I just want to also thank you, Alex. It's really been a pleasure working with you. Your positivity, your enthusiasm, your emotional intelligence, you being an active listener and just being very reflective. So, whatever the issue is, you're always well-read, well-prepared, very, you know, have a very inquisitive approach to it, but also always very open to listening and valuing and really listening to everyone's opinion, even if it's different from yours. And just really kind of appreciate your, your personality and your interpersonal skills, but just really kind of being a deep thinker and reflective person and a great colleague to work with for the past four years. And we're gonna really miss that nice presence that you bring to the school committee and positivity for sure and enthusiasm. And I wish you all the best in the upcoming election. And I really, really, really hope that you are sitting up here as a town council member. But thank you so much for your service to the school committee for the past four years. Really appreciate that.
Thank you for your kind words and support. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
If anyone else has anything they wanna add?
I just wanna echo Tammy's position. It was, it was great to serve with you for these last four years. It was really, you brought a good perspective. You brought good ideas and you worked hard. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. And the, you know, the line is always open. Feel free to give me a call anytime. Happy to talk.
All right. Well, thank you. I believe we are moving on to the superintendent's report now.
Thank you. So, you know, our principals and student liaison did a wonderful job highlighting, you know, so many great things going on in the district. And, you know, I'm appreciative of that. We really have had an excellent opening. And, you know, one of the highlights of the last couple of weeks was going to listen to students really think about policy and really think about alternatives and things we were, you know, we can consider long-term. And they really were, were going for it, you know. They had me convinced that the four-day school week is really the way to go. You know, they were working hard on that one. And so, you know, but lots of really thoughtful, positive analysis of the way things are and what they could potentially be. So, that was really fun to do. You know, one of the things that members of the committee asked for me to review in my report today was morning arrival. So, I just wanna give an overview of what morning arrival is. So, for our students, doors open for students at the elementary school at 8:55, at the peer school at 7:55. And at the high school, right around 7:30, doors open. Kids get there in various stages at, at the high school. It's a very, it's age-appropriate where they may be doing, have a practice or have something before school, or they might be meeting with a teacher or going for extra help. So, that, the high school flows a little bit differently than the other two schools. So, supervision at the elementary school begins as students arrive and that's again, age-appropriate. And at the peer school, right around 7:45, you know, we have had some trouble staffing, kind of the outside getting out there at 7:45. The administrators are often there, but sometimes they're pulled away to do subs or that type of thing. So, we have finally found a teacher that is willing to be out there every morning. So, that's a positive development. And then at the high school, the parking lot and grounds, the supervision starts right around 7:30 as, as kids start to get there. You know, one question that parents often have is, you know, how long do students have to be on the bus? So, again, the first buses get there somewhere between seven to 10 minutes beforehand. We have recently had a couple of buses that were arriving early. That is typical at this time of year as we kind of get through adjusting the routes. So, Derek is in the process of adjusting the routes after the first kind of six weeks of school. It's about the time where we get a real good feel of who's taking the bus typically, who's not taking the bus, how long it's gonna take them. Summer traffic has tied, has died down, kind of all those things. So, they make some adjustments at this time of year typically. So, a couple of other pieces, you know, we did have some questions about idling. So, we do follow the state laws around idling. You know, with diesel buses, it's, you can idle for roughly 10 minutes. You know, our buses shut themselves off when they get there. We actually go further because our mini-buses and our vans are gas. You know, you could theoretically let them idle, but we don't do that, right? So, all, all the buses stop. And again, at peer school, the first buses kind of get there early. They stop, they let kids off. Some of the buses will get there a little bit later, do idle because it's more of a rolling drop-off. So, they'll get there, they'll be waiting for a minute or two, and then they let the kids off. We do gather data on our buses. And so, we do have video GPS on them as they go forward. And so, that, that is very much intended to be kind of almost on, you know, like on your iPhone. Like you can see where someone is at a certain point. And so, we do gather safety data on that. It gives us whether buses are speeding, whether buses are kind of having hard turns, you know, kind of all those different things. And so, we are ready, able to regularly check up on whether drivers are being compliant. And, you know, we very rarely have any issues with that. And so, you know, that's kind of the basic overview of drop-off. So, I'm happy to take any questions about drop-off if people have them.
So, I, I just have a couple. I mean, I definitely had many parents reach out to me, specifically fifth-grade parents at the peer school, about kids staying on the bus for 15 minutes or so in the back before they were able to let in. And also, nobody being outside early enough and at the, the end of school. I did a little bit of research just to see, you know, what the state suggests. And it, you know, especially today, I mean, if we look at any kind of research when it talks about school shootings and intruders and stuff, many of those incidents happen around times where it's arrival or dismissal. And in the BEP, it does say, "Write to a state school. Each LEA shall ensure that students who are on school grounds before, during, and after school during recess and other intermissions are appropriately supervised by adults." In reading the Narragansett teacher contract, you know, looking forward to negotiations, it, it, it doesn't say that there's any duties for, for teachers before 8 o'clock, that their start time is 8 o'clock, their instructional day starts at 8 o'clock, their instructional day ends at 2:30. It does mention a lunch provision saying that they shall have no more time than their students are allowed, though it does say 20 minutes. So, you know, looking, looking at that, I, I do think we need to, to move into the 21st century. And as we look forward, we really make sure that all of our- forward, we really make sure that all of our students are protected when they get to school, and that we're not causing any undue stress on leaving kids on buses and such. There's so many different solutions that you could have for this. I know we hire people to run intramurals and stuff like that. I'm sure we could probably ask peer teachers, elementary teachers, to be supervisors and pay them in some kind of stipend form before negotiations happen. It's just really super important. And then the second thing, it says, "To the safe school." It says, "Each LEA shall follow state statutes." And that states that each student-staff member has the right to attend or work at a school that is safe and secure. Teachers arriving at 8 o'clock does not give and have to start their instructional minutes at 8 o'clock and leaving at 2:30, and their instructional minutes leave at 2:30 specifically for this peer school. Does not allow any time for this interaction, this safe, trusted adult interaction, or make sure even that their rooms are secured, that they're really, really prepared for the day, and that nothing is different within their rooms. I mean, even just locally, we saw in North Kingston, breaches and such. These things do happen. So I would just like to stress that, as a parent and a school committee member, that we really move into the 21st century and have these really important conversations about arrival and dismissal times in our town.
Great. Thank you for your input. The majority of our teachers are there well before school starts, and the majority of our teachers are there well after school ends. And when you are looking at the contract, it does say very specifically, teachers need to be in school and ready to start teaching at 8, which means that they can't arrive right at 8. Most of our teachers arrive well before class starts. And again, most of them are there working with kids or giving extra help well after. I think we have wonderful teachers. So I do not at all see, and I have not heard from principals, that we've had any issues with teachers either arriving with the students or leaving with the students.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? All right, thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve consent agenda items CA 1B, CA 1D, CA 2A, and CA 2B?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Just, oh, sorry. Just like to note that there was a change from the public document that was posted online. That change occurred today in a vote, so there was a mistake in that. So I just wanted to make sure that that change was noted before minutes were approved.
I noticed there was an error in the executive session votes. One whom's doing class was 4-1, not 5-0.
Is that the error that you found, Jen?
Yes, that was the error.
Oh, okay. If it's addressed, then that's fine.
Yeah. No, they were able to address that before, and Diane was able to sign off on it. But that was totally last minute, so you might have missed that.
No. If it was today, I'd have been at work.
Awesome.
Okay.
And thank you, Diane, for the last-minute update.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or question or comments on the consent agenda items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen.
Good evening. The expenditures for the three months ended September 30, 2024, total $5,373,150, and that's 14.57% of our budget. Expenses and encumbrances, total $28,566,306, and that's 77.45% of our budget.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Karen? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the 2024-2025 virtual instruction day plan for Narragansett school system?
So moved.
Second, discussion?
I just had a question about the synchronous time. So it says three hours of synchronous time. Just wanted to make sure that that was going to be equitable among all schools and all children, including special ed. Just know if you could talk to that a little bit.
Yes, it would be. And so what we would do is, should we need to go to a distance learning plan? So let me back up a little bit. First of all, this is for us in Narragansett, a last resort plan. And so we do have a school committee policy that says that really we would only even consider distance learning when we get up into the four, five, six days of emergency closure. And so should we need to go to distance learning, should we be getting to that place? We would be following our regular school schedule, but with a minimum of three hours of synchronous learning with the teachers. It's, I think, pretty difficult for children to be on a screen for six hours, right? So that's why that three hours is there. But it would be distributed throughout the school day so that there's some time on, then some time for independent work or some break time, but a minimum of three hours of teacher contact time for all students, special ed, not special ed, doesn't matter who that would be, for all kids.
And for students that might not have internet access?
So we have, and Giulio does a great job with this, we have hotspots that we have. And since every student does have a school-issued computer or tablet or something along those lines, we would ensure, like we did during COVID, that if they don't have home internet, they would get a hotspot from the school.
So just a reminder to our families, so let's say in December, we have a weather day, an ice day, a snow day. The very, very first weather-related snow ice day is going to be a no-school, no-virtual learning day?
Correct. So we believe in sledding. And so I think that the first couple of days are certainly, we don't cancel school lightly. It is a burden on families, it is very challenging. I personally recognize, I know our school system recognizes, that it is often really difficult and challenging for families if school is canceled unexpectedly. So we really only do that as a last resort. Being so close to the ocean, the weather is a bit fickle for us. And so sometimes the weather in Narragansett does not follow the pattern of the rest of the state because we are surrounded by water. Given that, though, we do have to go with the National Weather Service and the local forecasts, and we do the best analysis that we can to ensure that everyone is getting to and from school safely, including our staff, who are often coming from other parts of the state. That being said, so the first two or three, quite honestly, days, depending on how they are spread out, would be emergency, traditional emergency closure days. And then we would really need to look at, how is that impacting the end of the school year? How close is it getting to July? Kind of those types of pieces. And then we would start to make the analysis of, is it appropriate to do a virtual learning day?
And I think it's great that you're so well-prepared and so proactive, and I really like the policy and the plan that we have, because a lot of times, especially here with the amount of wind, that if we have snow or ice, a lot of us lose power, which makes it not easy to do any of this type of stuff. You're trying to stay warm and not let your food spoil.
Right, exactly. And I certainly hear from families at times where the driving may be really tricky and challenging between 6:00 and 10:00 a.m., and then it really clears up. We try to do delays when we can do it, and we really do want people to be, we want kids to be in school. So we do our best to make sure that happens.
Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember a particular instance where this would be a prime example of enacting this policy. The elementary school, everyone was storm, everyone lost power, and both the high school and the middle school were restored of power relatively quickly. But since the elementary school is attached to South Kingston's grid, it took, I think, a week and a half for that particular school to come back online, if I remember correctly?
It was four or five days, I think. And so, yes, and that was an instance where we can, if we have two schools in and one out, for example, we can occasionally get a waiver for one school to be off days, so to speak. But when we start to get to over two or three days of no instruction, that's not good for students. And so that would be a case where we would go to this sort of a plan.
Yeah. A prime example of some type of, not a snow day, not a regular weather pattern, something more extreme.
And again, we try...
And it shows.
Virtually, yes. And virtual learning is a very last resort for us. We know that in-person learning is the best way to do things. And so, again, we would try lots of different angles, including sharing space at other schools, should a situation like that happen again.
Sure, like a multiple week, maybe, potentially month, knock on wood.
Thank you for doing that, yes. So let's hope we're not in that situation. But we do have contingency plans in place should we face a situation like that.
This is just one of the many layers of the onion.
Correct.
Diane?
I just had a question under number two, curriculum and instruction. If you go down to H, the plan to provide synchronous instructional supports, and J, letter J, articulation of expectations for curriculum, the narrative column does not have a check in it, but yet when you go through and read the narrative, there is a paragraph devoted to H and J, so I was just wondering if that needs to be checked off?
I think it should be, so we probably just missed our checks there. Thank you for touching that.
I would, is it a re, just a shout-out to Giulio and team, and the uniqueness of our district as a whole for being able to allow such a policy to exist. I think it's a real privilege to, a program, a one-to-one laptop program that you guys started well before my time here, and allowing those resources to get out to our students and families for this kind of emergency plan to exist, I think just speaks volumes to the direction that this district takes as a whole to support education and those resources, and really appreciate all the efforts all around, and Giulio and your team as well.
Thank you, and many thanks to Gail, who did the bulk of the heavy lifting for the submission. And so she's not here tonight, but I know she's watching, so she did a great job.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. And the last business item for tonight, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the portrait of a graduate from Narragansett High School?
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Great. So this is something we've been working on for quite a bit of time, so I'd like to invite up Connor and Emily, who have been our co-chairs of this committee, and Chris is here as well, if you have any questions. But if you think back, we started this in the spring, we had a large committee, kind of pulled from across the town of civic leaders, students, parents, teachers, across the board. So where we, and I know Connor and Emily are going to go over this, but we really got a lot of input into this. And so we got feedback on a final draft about a week ago, and we're bringing it to you. So with that, I'll hand it off to Connor and Emily.
Perfect. Thank you. Good to see everybody. So, starting with the portrait of a graduate, it's the new format for our accreditation process. So as we moved into this, it's really supposed to be a K-12 initiative, so we really work together as a team with administrators and central office staff from across the district. So as you're all aware, the mission statement of the Narragansett school system is to enable every student to develop the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to be a lifelong learner and productive citizen by establishing rigorous academic expectations, supporting, caring, healthy, and safe environments, and creating personalized innovation and engaging in learning experiences. With that said, the portrait of a graduate creates a clear purpose for student learning beyond grades and test scores. Students are better prepared for any career pathway, and when learning focuses on developing durable skills such as creative problem-solving, critical thinking, resilience, and empathy, the shift moves conversations towards meaningful, future-ready skills. So it's really about bringing education into the 21st century, talking about what skills are students who are entering the workplace in the 21st century going to need. So what does the portrait of the graduate do specifically? It develops a broader view of success. It aligns education with the modern world. It responds to employers' needs. It promotes student agency, shifts pedagogy, and creates a clear purpose for student learning. Now, I think there's a lot there that could probably be abstract, so it was mine and Emily's job to come up with a process in how can we create a vision of a graduate that can be applicable to our school, but also to our community at large. And the way that we did this was by creating a vision of a graduate committee. So we created a large committee of students, parents, civic leaders, business leaders, and community members from around Narragansett. We met two times as a larger committee, multiple times as a steering committee. Both of those meetings were in May. Over the summer, we took the work that the committee had created, and we refined the draft and really tried to put the varying ideas from all the different stakeholders into one document that represented everyone's voice as best we could. Over the summer, and then in August at our PD, we solicited feedback from both the committee, but also from the faculty. We did this at the opening PD weekend, opening PD days, excuse me. And then we refined and revised a draft all last month and then into this month, and then October 7, we met with the committee for the last time to present our final product to them for approval. And then now, we're living the last bullet and presenting it to the school committee.
So what you'll see in this next slides, we developed a format to share this work. You have a heading at the very beginning that tells you that I am statement, I am this, I am that, and it goes through the reasoning, provides some more detailed information about what you can expect some of the learning to be, and then gives some points on how you exhibit these particular characteristics based on the heading of each of these. So we had five headings. I'm not going to read through all of this. You have that ready to you. But we are resilient and reflective learners in Narragansett. You can see that some of the habits and exhibits that we want to foster in our students are around curiosity, metacognition, thinking about your own thinking, and being reflective in that practice, being self-aware and persevering through that grit that we always talk about. Another area that we have is being a global citizen. So when you dive into this a little bit, you're looking at not just being a citizen in the community, but you're looking at being a citizen digitally, and looking at those cultural competencies that you might need to be, so that you're aware of your community, and also having that respect for the differences within your community, being open and service-minded, and keeping an ethical approach to what you do, and trying to be a leader within that community. Empathetic and understanding individual. So you can see, we've got a lot of different characteristics, and sometimes they do seem to overlap, but they're all intertwined in this huge vision that we have for our students here in Narragansett. So having integrity, being respectful with your interactions, being grateful and advocacy skills that you're going to need, being compassionate and understanding others. Additionally, we want our graduates to be effective communicators, written, dialogue, collaborative presentations, active listening is also a part of that. So these are really important pieces of being an effective communicator. And lastly, critical thinker and problem solver, which is a huge one. We had some debate on whether to keep those separate or to bring them together. We thought they really work better together, so we combined them in this greater category. Looking at a critical thinker that's focused, has creativity, uses logical reasoning to work through problems, has attention to the accuracy and flexibility around their thinking, and looking for that. around their thinking and looking for that data, that information literacy and, and thinking about the interdependence within the thinking of groups and research. So we've got some next steps here. So we're very thankful that we're at this, like hopefully final step with, with you guys looking at the, the project. So as part of this, we want to build out our project, our Portrait of the Graduate foundational document to include examples of grade level expectations. We want to take that and do it by grade span because the language that you're seeing in this document may not be as friendly for a kindergartner or second grader. So we kind of want to like build it down. And that is our next step for this, to use, to create these friendly, more kid-appropriate versions that we can post alongside the, the language that you're seeing. Also, we want to, you know, survey our staff and students, or rather, our students, to kind of like help us develop a friendly visual, something that they can develop and have ownership in this process as well. And then we want to map backwards the learning experiences we must incorporate. So if we're having someone be a critical thinker, what are some of the opportunities that we need to provide within our learning structures so that they can have opportunities to, to display this critical thinking that they need? So it's really trying to pinpoint those pivotal places within the curricular vertical alignment, if you will, to kind of highlight where we can tag these different characteristics and different categories.
So Connor and Emily have done a wonderful job leading this effort. And, you know, it really does round out our whole idea. It's aligned to the mission statement. You know, education is more than just grades, right? It's about educating the whole person and providing those foundational skills that when, you know, our students graduate and they hold that diploma, you know, what does it mean and what are they ready to do? You know, are they ready to tackle the challenges of college and career and being involved in their community and, and going out into the world?
Any questions or comments from the school committee?
I would just like to commend both of you and Dr. Cummings. I was part of the steering committee. And I have to say, it was one of the most organized school functions that I've ever been to. I'm a teacher. I go to many different conferences and such. It lit a fire in everybody in that room. And I feel as though, you know, this is really the crux that is going to make Narragansett really move into the 21st century. So thank you for the time that this takes. I know it's not an easy feat and I think you guys did a really, really great job. So thank you.
I agree. I too was part of those workshops. And I, I think it was a really unique opportunity for allow us to put a pause on everything and to reflect on what's been working, what could be improved upon as a district as a whole and, you know, take some of the experiences that we learned upon graduation from Narragansett and saying, hey, I wish I had known that when I was in school or I wish that had been better. But what really amazed me was the, you know, the passion from parents, students, administrators, everyone involved with the conversations, everyone willing to come to the table to provide that feedback and participate in that dialogue. It was really impressive to see the number of ideas that were shared and to see it condensed down to five workable, I don't even know what you call these, like. A workable document as a whole is just really impressive because I remember there being a long list of different traits, attributes that we hoped to instill in students upon graduation and to see it condensed down. And I know there was a lot of overlapping. To bring it down to a very usable document, I think is very impressive. And I'm really reassured in the direction that this district is taking. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I know how much time and effort went into developing a document such as the Portrait of the Graduate. And lots of times with aspirational documents, they get put up on a wall or they get put in a binder and put on the shelf. But I was very happy to see the next steps because that's what's kind of my questions of how it's going to bridge the portrait into curriculum development, how administrators will use it, how teachers will use it to embed it in teaching and learning. And then how will the students, will there be a measurement of the students so they can know their progress towards becoming this optimal graduate?
There will be. And so I think this integrates really nicely with the requirement of the individualized learning plan that we have. And so that those self-reflection steps become a part of that. And I think it also becomes, we've done a lot of work with thinking classrooms and part of that is around self-reflection and kind of identifying who you are and who you want to be as a learner, right? And so those pieces as well, you know, skills like this don't happen by magic. They have to be practiced and taught and explained and, and shown. And so the intentionality that this document allows us to bring to that sort of work, I think is going to be really powerful.
And I was not part of the steering committee, but I'm really excited to hear the positive feedback about how that process went. So that's fantastic to hear that. And I agree with everything that everyone said, but especially, I just love, you know, this very high level, like the formatting, the sentence stems, the structures, the way it's set up. So taking all these great ideas, but in a very organized, succinct, clear framework, which I'm excited to support tonight and then really looking forward to seeing those grade span expectations or grade level expectations and all that curriculum work. So, so well done for all the, the hard work from the stakeholders that gave input and then for the people that really had to get it down to this level, which I'm assuming was a big lift from the two of you. And I know you had help from other people, but super impressed. This is fantastic. All right. Any other final thoughts from the school committee before we vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? Okay. We are back. Hopefully. The next meeting of the Narragansett School Committee meeting will be November 20th at seven o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at eight forty tonight?
So moved.
All in favor?